Twenty-five at six thirty P M. Let the record show there is a quorum of board members present. Steven Shodrock, myself, Mr. Craig Mutz, Ms. Liana Martinez, Mr. Marshall Fleer, Mr. Jason Saboda, Ms. Bana Reed, and Dr. Joel Oden. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Ms. Martinez will now lead us from prayer, followed by Dr. Oden to lead the prayers.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve our students, staff, and community. Guide our hearts and minds as we make decisions that impact the education and well-being of our children. May we lead with wisdom, integrity, and compassion, always keeping the best interests of our students at the center of our work. We lift up our teachers, administrators, and support staff who dedicate themselves each day to nurturing and inspiring young minds, grant them strength, patience, and encouragement as they shape the future. We also pray for our students that they may grow in knowledge, kindness, and confidence, supported by a community that believes in their potential. As we begin this meeting, may our words and actions be guided by respect, humility, and a shared commitment to the success and well-being of our schools. Bless our work tonight and help us serve with wisdom and unity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and
Mr. Fleer will now recite our F I S D vision and mission statement.
The F I S D vision statement is character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is F I S D is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Mr. Mutz will now recite our F I S D goals.
The F I S D goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board recitation of the F I S D core beliefs. Our F I S D core beliefs are, in F I S D, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment. Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptive individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Mr. Saboda will now recite our overview of the good governance and the code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the F I S D board of trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month of the code of ethics we are highlighting trustworthiness and stewardship. I will be accountable to the public by representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress accurately. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources. I will make no personal promise to take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities. Our good governance indicator for this month is the board has a written plan for conducting the performance evaluation of the superintendent and establishing the appraisal instruments for the superintendent.
We will now have some recognition for the Florisville I S D students and teacher of the month, Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, board members, I'd like to introduce Jim Roddy. If you could come forward, our middle school principal, he's going to do some introductions for our students and teacher of the month.
Good evening. Come on up. Sweet, y'all want to come on up? Don't be shy. So I would like, in fact, I am pleased to speak with you this evening and share with you our students and faculty member of the month. First of all, I am pleased to present to you Camille Kane, one of Florisville Middle School's Students of the Month. Camille is a lifelong student of Florisville I S D, having attended Florisville North Elementary before beginning at the middle school, where she is now an eighth grader and looking forward to high school. Camille has three sisters and one brother, she's the youngest, and she enjoys music, bouncing on the trampoline, and hanging out with her nieces and nephews. At Florisville Middle School, Camille has maintained almost straight A averages. Her favorite class is U S History. She's a Florisville Middle School cheerleader and plays the flute in the concert band. In fact, if you attended the pre-U I L concert last month, you had a chance to hear Camille perform a solo on her flute. Camille is looking forward to high school, where she plans to participate in cheerleading, band, and floral design. She's also considering studying for a career as a pediatrician. The one thing Camille wants you to know about her is that she believes in working hard and pushing through it. It is my privilege to present Camille Kane as the Florisville Middle School Student Next, it is my indeed privilege to present to you our other student of the month, Kyler Van Bentham. Kyler is also an eighth grader at Florisville Middle School, and he's also a lifelong Florisville I S D student. He also went to Florisville North Elementary. He is a middle child, he has an older brother and a younger sister, and when he's not at school, he enjoys online gaming, especially a game called Stormworks, which allows you to build and use vehicles. And this is great practice for Kyler because he plans to become an engineer. At Florisville Middle School, Kyler's enrolled in multiple honors classes and maintains an almost perfect high A average. His favorite subject is history. He played football here this year, and he's an active member of our campus flag corps. Kyler's plans for high school might include welding, and he definitely plans to try out for football again. He's also looking forward to theater classes and hopes to participate in one-act play with his brother. After high school, Kyler plans to join the United States Navy and then pursue his goal of becoming an engineer. I am honored to present to you Kyler Van Bentham, Florisville Middle School Student of the And last and certainly not least is my privilege to present to you our teacher of the month. I am honored to present Ms. Leila Smith as the recipient of Florisville Middle School's Teacher of the Month award. Ms. Smith has been a teacher of Florisville Middle School for eight years. She came to us after ten years at Farr San Juan Alamo, is that right? Independent School District in the Valley, and two years at Jubilee Schools in San Antonio. Ms. Smith has two children, one of whom is currently a student at F M S, and the other graduated last year. She lists her hobbies as walking, gardening, redecorating, and organizing. And before you get any ideas, I've already put in a bid for her to come over with my garage first. She began her career at F M S eight years ago as a science teacher. The first time I walked into her classroom and observed how she engages her students and instills an excitement for learning, I knew she was a valuable member of our team. Two years ago, she made it known she wanted to become the teacher for our life skills class. When I asked her why she pursued this assignment so passionately, she said she prayed about it a lot and wanted to challenge herself. Since she stepped into this role, she has transformed our life skills classroom into a center for learning and achievement. She says she loves to see all of her students' little victories. She told me the one thing she wants you to know most about her is that everything she does is for her students. She did not really need to tell me this because it is obvious in the effort and caring that she and her team exert for every student in her class. Her outgoing personality and quick smile helped promote the morale and camaraderie of our entire team. I cannot imagine not saying good morning to her each day as we wait for the buses to show up. Ms. Smith is an outstanding educator, and I am pleased to present her to you as our teacher of the month. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
As the teacher, Mrs. Smith, to go through what you do with middle school, I taught middle school two, three years only, and the science teacher in you, I've heard students say you've instilled, they wanted to learn more about science. Now, there's life skills. I have, one of my daughter-in-law does life skills in San Antonio, and that, and seeing that you have to be very dedicated, very sincere, and lots of patience, to do that, to challenge yourself, but I don't think you have a challenge, you have a love for them. So it isn't hard for you to do it, you have shown your personality, and like I said, you have a very sweet smile. And sometimes a smile is all it takes for a student to have because at home they might not have it or don't understand that. And I'm just very, very proud of you for being teacher of the month. And like I said, doing life skills and special needs is an amazing, amazing career change. All right, Camilla, I'm very proud of you, what you do in attending, looking forward to high school, and I'm sure you'll fit in just fine because you make good grades and that's very important. And U S History, well, history was my second major, so I do love history. And the kids, they always can come in, they always, they know I'm at their house. Well, Mamaw's been there, and she has the History Channel on, and leave it on, and I go, well, I love it. If you, the flute and being in the band, it takes a lot of practice. And people think, oh, band, easy. No, I did the clarinet. No, it takes, you have dedication and do that. And to be a pediatrician, more apology, because kids are neat. And so that if you have to keep the dedication, and maybe you can be like our great-grandkids' pediatrician, you know how it is to work hard and push through it, and it shows through that, and it's going to show, so you can come back and be a pediatrician here in Florisville. Kyler, listen, young man, and doing all the, making, both of you, making the LAs, and that's an accomplishment, because sometimes in middle school, I had boys, or middle school kind of gets to the side and they don't worry about your grades until, but you do worry about your grade, and honor students, and that is just wonderful. And playing my, and again, I said, history was my second major, playing football, and you have learned, you have learned already how to budget your time for studies with that, and the flag corps is awesome. Welding is very, it's a good field to go into. And theater classes, guess what, my first major was theater. I did one-act play and everything, so I have a little special heart for that. And that takes time, because you've got to practice and get in that. And if you've got football and everything else, you're involved, it's scheduling and then go home and burn the midnight oil. My daddy was in the Navy, so he was in World War II, and the Navy's admirable, admirable field of service to go into. And you can come back when you're finished with your engineering degree, maybe you can come back and then be with us in Florisville. Thank you.
Come on up, please, we can take a picture. Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate y'all. Thank you for your support.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zekel will pass it over to you, please.
You got a hundred men.
What happened?
Oh, okay. Okay, hello again, everybody. First and foremost, I'm sorry we don't have shirts for you this year, but I bet y'all kind of secretly are excited about that. But no, this is our 2025 competitive group. I have a new friend with me now, Mrs. Wallace, she is helping co-sponsor with me for the Tech Association of Future Educators here at Florisville High School. This year, we had twenty-two kiddos competed area at state. These are my kiddos, we're only missing two of them, Will Graham and Luke Bonifert. But my first competitive group, Timmy, could you go over there with your group, please? Sorry, I have OCD, it is what it is. We had a chapter yearbook competition, and our chapter yearbook consisted of Cole and Hunter and Luke, and they received the silver award in the chapter yearbook. Next up, we had Will that's not here, we have Timmy, Valen, and Caleb, and they competed in the researching learning challenges, and that's actually a really super interesting competition. They did a phenomenal job, and we were so upset that they didn't advance to nationals, but they gave it heck, and we are so proud of them. And they're all seniors this year, and they, you know, they took me up on please compete with me, and we had a great time in Galveston, and I'm super proud of you guys still. Ms. Evelyn, she actually wrote a Spanish book. She competed in a Spanish division elementary education book. She wrote a book about a little monkey, and I'm not, I don't speak Spanish, but Evelyn did a phenomenal job in that competition, and hopefully we'll have her back next year so we can just make it even better. Ms. Cadence competed in creative lecture, she got a silver award in creative lecture, did a phenomenal job. And our public speakers were, our varsity division was Devin Nuzman, our JV division was Brynlee Baggs. Both of these individuals are going to be traveling to Florida this summer for nationals, they are national qualifiers, and they did a really great job. Our public speaking this year covered.
Teacher retention.
Teacher retention, and they had a great speech, and they like learned it and gave it, it was a big deal. Now, Chloe Asensio, she received a perfect score at area competition, a perfect score, okay? She competed in creative lecture, which is like the Ted Talk that we've talked to you guys about before. This was over A I, and I don't know a whole lot about A I, and I don't think a lot of us know a whole lot about A I, but they, her and Cadence did a phenomenal job. But at state, Chloe, and I, I can say this because I know it, but we just can't put it out there on the spectrum, but she scored a perfect score and got first place at state and received a hundred-dollar scholarship at state for taffies, so good job, Chloe. Last year, she received third in the nation for creative lecture, and this year, we're going for gold. So I mean, with what we have behind us, we are super confident and super excited, but these kids work their tails off and they have to put up with me. And now Ms. Wallace, and our expectations are high, and what you do is a reflection of me and Ms. Wallace, and we are just so proud of them, and I love you guys so much, and for those of you that get to still compete, great, and for those of you that aren't, don't forget us. We'll miss you, guys. But these are our taffy competitors for 2025.
Future educators. Come back.
I am so excited for each one of you, especially this young lady over here, a perfect score. I didn't do perfect in anything. I appreciate perfect, right? But congratulations to all of you. Listen, I remember a lot of my teachers growing up and the investment that they made in my life that's made me the man I am today. And I look forward to seeing you guys do the education and pour yourself into students' lives as you've been poured in by Ms. Cassie, Ms. Wallace. Listen, you guys are great, I congratulate you, I cannot wait to sign you up to a contract, well, that is up to you. Sign you up to a contract for Florisville Elementary, right? More than, more thankful for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Are you going to say thank you? We're tired of teaching. Oh, yeah, okay. We'll be there.
No shirts this year, that's okay. It's okay.
It's cute, too. It's cute, I like the boots. That was the theme, did a roundup, future educator. We will now have our community of the character award in this wacker. Please come up.
Good evening, board president, Dr. Gilstrap and staff. It's unfortunate that I didn't, all of us people are not going to get to hear what I have to say about the president. Seriously, but you know what, that's okay, they'll read it in the newspaper.
Come on up, Ms. Plo.
Come on, Ms. Plo, this is about Ms. Plo. I recently lost my father, he's in heaven waiting for the rest of us, and he was such a good example of character, in fact, he taught me what character was all about. So it's something that I identify, try to identify in people right away. That's what, that's what I see when I meet, when I met Mrs. Plo. Today, I'm excited to share with the board, staff, and parents and the community of Florisville the gem that we have here in Florisville E C C. Some of you may be familiar with Ms. Carrie Plo, she's been with Florisville for twelve years, but she's been with teaching for about twenty. She was over in different public school, S A I S D, and some Catholic schools, and good thing she came back over here. Her husband John's from Florisville, so she came back this way to teach. She's been a teacher and an instructional coach, and I was fortunate enough to have received her from the north campus when I arrived two years ago. Mrs. Plo has a very unique job. She is the behavior specialist at our school, which has a job description of, well, everything. Her official title is Behavior Specialist, New Teacher Mentor, Website Coordinator for our Facebook page, but off the record, she is truly a coach, a nurse, a counselor, a decorator, a lunchroom magician, a car line specialist, a bus duty perfectionist, and everyone calls her throughout the day to help in some way. She is always available. She knows every student, she goes in all directions quickly and ready. She'll assist with anything, and she's amazing at what she does because she never complains, not out loud anyway, John may hear that when she gets out loud. She absolutely loves our kids, she knows our kids, she knows what they like, she knows who they are, she knows who their parents are, what they ate yesterday, everything. The staff at E C C joke that Mrs. Plo carries a magic wand or she has magic dust that she sprinkles, because even the most escalated situations that most people would just give up on, she seems to handle with ease. This past Christmas, the district sponsored assisting families in need, and a few families were chosen to receive gifts from our district and from our school. While these families are being identified, Mrs. Plo decided to adopt two families on her own. That's Mrs. Plo, she's always doing things for people. And she went out and she got a child's bed, the mattress, a dresser, and she knew the child's favorite character, Paw Patrol, no big surprise. And the thing is, one day she was after, she was here after work, and I'm like, go home, go home, it's time to go home. And, because I always have to shish her away, she's always trying to do something else. And she says, no, I'm waiting for John. And I said, what are y'all going to do? She says, we're going to go deliver the items. So John came to pick her up, and after work, they go over there, not only did they buy the bed and get the bed, but they delivered it and they set it up, they got it all set up, mattress frame, everything. And then they realized that the frame and the mattress were off by a little. And if you know Ms. Plo, then I'm going to fly, she does not have anything done off a little. So they go back and they bought another one, they went back out to the family's home so that it was perfection for that child. They, and they did that all, I think, that night. She did that for a couple of families, including buying toys and other things that she just does. She doesn't say anything, but I always notice her doing things, like when this new store opened, Five and Below, she was just so anxious to go over there, I'm thinking to buy stuff for her own, but no, I go in the morning at six fifteen and there's hula hoops and balls and all kinds of stuff, and she said, I just wanted to buy a few things for the kids. And I'm like, again? But she likes to see our children succeed. She doesn't, she doesn't get the recognition I think that she deserves because she goes underground, she's just, it's just her nature. She's an absolute joy to work with, she's a person of great character, leadership, and most of all kindness. I feel blessed to work with her, and I truly admire her tenacity and determination in everything she does. I mainly love how much she loves these kids, and she refuses to give up on any of them. She sees our students through the eyes of God, and we often say to each other when we're in a moment with a child, remember, Carrie, this is a child of God, and we will treat them with the utmost respect. I thank Mrs. Plo for being an outstanding individual who demonstrates high level of character and respect. And something else I have to offer, yesterday, this woman just ran her first thirteen-point-one marathon, her and her husband, and finished it, and she's here at work today, and she's not limping. I love Mrs. Plo, and I'm so glad that you guys give me the honor of working with her and that the community has her here.
I'm very fond of her, yeah.
Ms. Plo, your kindness, dedication, and willingness to go above and beyond, not just in your role, but in the way that you care for others, is a true testament to the impact that one person can make. We need more compassion, and we're very, very grateful that we have you on our side and that you're doing all this to make not only the school a better, a better place, but the world also. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
All right. Mr. Petrie, do we have any public comments? I have some up here ready.
No comment.
The board encourages the comments about the districts from the members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board procedure may do so at this time. The board asks that each participant's comments pertain to the district business in no longer than two minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are posted on our agenda, that are not posted on our agenda. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of the district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available at www.fisd.us. At this time, Ms. Terry, if you want to come on up. And Ms. Petrie, you'll keep track of the time, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marissa Terry, and I just wanted to address a couple of what I would consider missed opportunities when it comes to this bond. So the Facility Task Force Focus Plan presentation wasn't allowed to, we were advised not to use certain words, bond, proposition, taxes, even funding. We just stuck to the recommendations, right? But in doing so, I feel like maybe we missed the opportunity to address to y'all some of the recommendations we truly did have. For example, number one and number two of our recommendations list, we would have loved for those to have been propositions in and of themselves. And everything else that you chose to approve could have been a third proposition. I know athletics is different, but presenting propositions to the community could have been great. So missed opportunities, number one. The first opportunity that was missed was to inform the community about the recommendations prior to presenting the bond. We made them to you, but people don't go home and necessarily watch YouTube to see, you know, like if it had been presented from you guys, all that was recommended and why it's needed. You guys are the authority figures, right? We just gave you a list of recommendations. But if the community knew what those were and why they were important, and then got a bond down the road, I think you could have built that foundation first rather than surprising them. Second, potentially the biggest opportunity missed, again, is having the propositions. Which brings me to the third missed opportunity, addressing taxes. Had there been propositions, people would have been able to decide for themselves, A, what is important to them, what do they want to vote for? And B, how much taxes they're willing to take on. Now, all three could have passed regardless of certain people's wanting to take on the full bond, right? But at least that choice could have been there. And finally, the most fundamental missed opportunity is the lack of information. The bond was announced in February, and you guys are having the election in May, and there has been nearly nothing put out. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment, Ms. Terry. Thank you. Next, Mr. Schaper, please, sir.
Winston Schaper. First, I want to thank the board for volunteering to do the tough job of being on the board and making tough decisions. And I'm a friend to FISD, and like a good friend, I always like to be honest. And it's been 17 years since our last bond, and we have some real issues. And that's why I volunteered to be on the board or on the facility committee to do those things. But as we went through that thing, as we went through the decision-making, we proposed three different bonds. We thought that should really be broken up into three different opportunities for smaller bonds to be passed. And somewhere in the middle of that, it got confused, and all of a sudden, we've got a major one single bond. Whereas if we would have the smaller bond, we actually would have access to $7 million in addition to whatever bond we passed. So if we would have passed $11 million bond, then we would also have an additional $7 million to solve some of those, those issues. So I think our attempt wasn't carried through to the board. And that might be like she was saying, that we didn't, we didn't communicate it right or there somehow there was some communication was missed. I don't know how we fix it now, right? The bond's already, the bond's kind of going like that. But I think everybody I've talked to, I haven't spoken to one person who wants to pass the bond at $95 million. I, I could be wrong, but I haven't spoken to anybody who wants to pass it. So I don't know what happens in the future, but I think, you know, it's been 17 years. Maybe we do need to start going every three to four years, passing smaller bonds. And I would suggest that if, if it does fail, then maybe we go back next year and we try a smaller bond and try this again. That's, that's my thought. Thanks for listening.
Appreciate your comment, Mr. Schaper. Thank you. Next, Mr. Andrew Brooks.
Good evening. As you know, I was a participant on the Facilities Task Force. I joined with expectation that would be a transparent, community-driven process. Instead, it became clear the district had already decided what they wanted before we ever stepped in that room. And we were just put there to check a box. After the first meeting, community participation dropped drastically because many felt like our input did not matter. We were led through exercises designed to steer us toward a pre-planned outcome, and were repeatedly told not to focus on costs, tax impact, or salaries of teachers, parents, or police officers, or bus drivers. The expectation was just put these recommendations in order and rubber stamp it. One of the clearest examples of silencing community concerns happened when Ms. Terry and I met with Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Wade, and Sledge Engineering, and other, where we sat and were forced to remove the following statements, which I apologized to the task force. I did not want to. But at the time, I had relatives working in the district, and I was trying to play nice, but this was forced to remove. Our task force has taken pride in being good stewards of our community, teachers, and students. We firmly believe that addressing the district-wide safety and security improvements and constructing a new intermediate campus are essential to the success of Florisville ISD. However, presenting these items as separate bond propositions provides a balanced approach that acknowledges the needs of our students and teachers while remaining mindful of the community's possible financial constraints while leaving opportunity to address future salary needs. I was forced to remove that. While we knew the bond, the board had the ultimate say, we had hoped with board participation at the meetings, these concerns would be heard. The district had a choice between a more balanced $83 million-ish dollar bond with separate propositions or $95 million, all or nothing. And if the logic is that $95 million is just pennies on the dollar compared to $83 million, heck, why not go for the 100-plus? You're already doubling our INS tax rate, and that'll crush homeowners, especially with our rising out-of-control property values. And not to mention, there's no way of knowing how school vouchers will affect us, no matter the district, big or small. Our committee did not think it was fiscally responsible to max out our INS tax rate and then kill the appetite for any future M&amp;O bond to support groups I previously mentioned. Instead, the gap between administration and teacher pay is growing at alarming rate. Yet, when we asked about M&amp;O bonds, we said, we were told, hey, that happens in November. Okay, well, where's that plan since 2022 to work on teacher pay, parent pay, bus driver pay, those type of things, our police officers? Where was that? It was crazy. Well, we connect the dots now with the rumors going around that our leadership may be leaving. It makes sense why this bond was pushed through. Wasn't for the better of our community, it's for resume building. I challenge you all to do better for our community, especially our students moving forward.
Appreciate your comment, Mr. Brooks. Thank you. Mr. Robert?
Gable, please.
Again, it's about the same thing, right? The bond. I didn't know, is it too late to change the bond as one big bond at this point? I mean, can you, can you change it?
No, that's too late.
It's already done. I'll read this anyway and go from there. There have been a lot of bonds failing in Texas recently, and the amount of taxes and property value increases are causing a lot of financial stress on, on homeowners. A major concern during the Facilities Task Force meetings was how this bond would affect the local taxpayer and the amount the bond would cost the individual. People are already organizing against the bond online. I think it would be unwise to bundle these projects into one bond because I believe it will cause the bond to fail. FISD will then not get any of the much-needed improvements that they need. I was going to ask if you could break them up into individual propositions, which is what the task force is really kind of focused on, so that they have a better chance to pass. If they were broken up, taxpayers could see the benefit of some of the improvements, even if they didn't feel that the whole package was affordable. Under those circumstances, FISD may see some of the propositions pass instead of seeing all of them fail. But if it's too late, I mean, hopefully it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. Appreciate your comment. We will now continue with the reports and updates with superintendent report by Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, board members, just want to start off real quick. I'm not going anywhere. I'm not leaving Florisville ISD. Let's, want to make sure this fell out. We continue moving forward with educating our community on the upcoming board election. The Trifold and Flyer have been shared with our community through social media and other platforms, providing some details about the bond, the amount, what projects will be addressed, and of course, the tax implications. I'm scheduling informational presentations with various groups, so if you have a group that would like for me to come and present, be glad to do that. We're also organizing some informational meetings for our community to attend. There have been several questions posed regarding the bond election, so we were developing an FAQ to be included on our website, which will be activated very soon. We also encourage our community to visit that website once it's up and running for more information. This page will also be updated throughout the bond election process, and we encourage, again, the community to get registered to vote by April the 3rd in order to participate in the election. Also, early voting dates will be Tuesday, April the 22nd through Tuesday, April the 29th, and Election Day will be Saturday, May the 3rd. All voting will take place at the Wilson County Election Office. We are scheduling those, or the form, the informational community meetings. Those are going to be available. We'll put them on the website and everything else. We'll have one March the 18th at the Middle School, also April the 3rd at North Elementary, and then April the 15th, also at the Middle School. So I wanted to make sure we shared that information going forward. We continue working with Region 20 for our TIA. We're working through the teacher incentive allotment application to make sure we get that submitted by April. And we are continuing to have meetings with staff members and administrators as we develop that plan. Tasbe Policy Update 124 was released last month. We were going to try to get that on this week, or this month's agenda, but we'll have to move that to our April agenda due to not having our policy committee meeting shared with everybody. Also, our pre-K and Kinder Roundup will be tomorrow from 2 to 6 here at the Early Childhood Center at the cafeteria. And then we're also having two other events coming up, and those dates will be published in due time. But we want to make sure we're encouraging any, anybody in our community who has students who have not attended Florisville ISD in the past, whether they're obviously incoming pre-K or incoming Kinder, but also just people that haven't attended our schools, we want to make sure that they get registered as soon as possible. Our enrollment and attendance data is provided there for the board's review. Current enrollment's 4,017 as of this past Friday. Our year-to-date attendance is at 43.31%, which still remains right about where we built our budget on. So we're, we're still tracking well within our budget. There are also some graphs and charts there to show how we compare to previous years. Don't forget, next week is spring break, so if you're looking for anybody up here at the school, you're going to be disappointed. And if you have children, don't drop them off next week. We got spring break next week. Any questions?
Dr. Gilstrap, I appreciate you providing some clarity on, on that you're going to be staying with us. I appreciate that. The transparency has been something that we've always done over the last couple of years as we started the surveys. I think we did them in '22, we did in '24, so the transparency was very important, including the workshop we did in the early part of the May, when we focused on the five to six of the priorities, and we focused on those three. So the voices and the priorities are truly what we've listened and we've heard from the community, and we certainly appreciate that. And we want the community to come out and support that because that's the only thing that we've been told is we need, we need the infrastructure in the, in the school. So we appreciate that. We look, we appreciate your update. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda by Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, board members, we have our typical consent agenda with our business reports. We also have a donation from the Athletic Booster Club for a donation of $15,000. I believe they're going to take that money and distribute it amongst each sport. I think they're going to give them, I know they already did this once earlier this year. So there, where's Ms. Angel at?
$1,000 to the high school sports and then $2,000 to the middle school athletics as a whole. So that's the 15,000.
So that's the $15,000 donation. So we appreciate Ms. Angel as president of the Athletic Booster Club. We appreciate all of their support and their hard work. They work concession stands and all those kind of things to do their fundraising and then work with Coach Martinez to help and assist in, you know, meeting our athletic goals. So thank you all very much for your hard work. Board members, if there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Craig Meech to accept the recommendation and a second by Marshall Flair. Are there any questions or comments? Please show hands. All in favor? Seven to zero. We will now consider approval of the 2025-2026 FISD school calendar by Dr. Wade. Dr. Wade.
Thank you. Good evening, President Shadrock. Dr. Gilstrap and board members, tonight, I will be asking the board to approve the 2025-2026 calendar. I never thought I'd live in that year. So I have a little short, short, Mr. Sabona, short presentation.
Thorough, but thorough.
I'm sorry?
But thorough.
Short, but thorough. Absolutely, always. So as a reminder, you've seen this graphic before. The district has been working to develop a calendar since September, ending with board action last month, where you gave parameters for the district. And so I also want to review that the Calendar Community Survey was launched in December, indicated that 68% of participants were in favor of a four-day or a four-day hybrid calendar, with almost 11% saying maybe to one of those, and only 21% saying no. Last month, the board provided the direction about the development of the calendar with the following parameters: daily minutes not to exceed 470, a maximum of 164 student days, which is five less than what we currently have, 169, and May 29th being the latest possible date for students. With these parameters, the Calendar Committee met once again in February. This is the latest Calendar Committee meeting I've had since I've been here in eight years. Considerations the committee discussed in developing a couple of calendars were having a consistent hybrid calendar with five days in the beginning of each semester and then beginning the four days after the first grading period. They also wanted to make sure that at least there was one day for staff without students each month, whether that was a holiday or professional learning day. Those were some of considerations. And then just a reduction in the total number of teacher days. So there were two calendar options, only two, that the Calendar Committee wanted to present to the staff, which we did, and launched a survey. It must have been late February. And you can see overwhelmingly, of the 293 responses we got, most people chose option two as their preference. So here are some highlights of option two. You actually have option one and two in your packet for reference. So 164 student days, which was what was given to me as a parameter for the board, that compares to 169 days this current year. In this calendar, there are daily minutes of 470. Compare that to the 460 daily minutes for elementary. So just a quick comparison. I'll have some more detail of that in just a second. Teacher days in this new calendar, 178, compared to this current year of 187. So that means the total annual minutes, remember, we must have 75,600 minutes, gives us 77,800 minutes compared to the elementary this year only has 76,890. So a few extra minutes. And then the last is there, we were talking about Fridays, that the district would be off. There are There are 18 non-holiday Fridays. I'm not counting Good Friday and when we end the semester. So those are the days the district is working to provide childcare for pre-K through fifth grade students. So it's 18 total days. So just to give you an example, this is what's proposed at this time about bell schedules. So you can see the columns and grades where we are currently, and then here's the proposed start and end times. I won't go in detail, but just to say, for early childhood campus, that's an increase of 15 minutes per day, and for both elementaries, it's an increase of 10 minutes per day. But for middle school and high school, it is a decrease. So the middle school is going to have, see a decrease of 10 minutes per day, and the high school will see a decrease of 15 minutes per day. So you'll recall, one of the reasons that we had such a, we have such a longer day for the high school is because of that five-by-five and the need for those 90-minute classes for, for CTE. So they'll be able to go back to a more traditional bell schedule. So, and overall, I tried to just snip semesters for you, just give you an overview about the detailed calendar. So the option two that most staff have a preference for has the first day of school beginning August the 12th with five-day weeks throughout that grading period. So you can see, we start here on the 12th, and we go to school, there's Labor Day, and then here at the end of the grading period, October 9th, is when we begin those four-day weeks. And then a full week is available for Thanksgiving, and then we, students are out on the 18th, and then we begin Christmas or winter break beginning on December the 22nd. Then if I look at the spring semester, let me see if I can get to there. Yes, school resumes on January the 6th right here, and you can see we're back to the five days a week, right? We came back, had a long break, so we're going to resume the five days a week. There is Presidents' right here, Presidents' Day on the 16th, and then here is the end of the grading period, the 6th, and there is spring break, a full week of spring break. And then after we return to spring break is when we would start the five and the four-day weeks again until the end of the semester. The last day for students would be the 28th, and then teachers would have a workday on the 29th. Are there any questions about the proposed calendar?
So this year, we have a total of how many four-day weeks in our current calendar? You know, we've talked about it before, about 13.
13 or 14? I think it was 13, 14, yeah.
And this, this new option two?
There's, there's 18, right? With non-Friday holidays. I mean, there's, there might be some more, but Good Friday's in there, so I didn't count that one. Does that help? Other questions?
When this gets passed out and the childcare is listed?
That's, that's, yes, those are the Fridays. So the Fri, those 18 Fridays are identified on the calendar.
Just be listed like this so the parents can see that they do have option for childcare.
Absolutely.
We've, we've included in the packet the, Blanca, Ms. Martinez has already been working on the calendar we would have for distribution. I call it a refrigerator calendar. It's one you can print out and hang on the refrigerator.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It's a good job on us.
Anything else? Okay? If not, administration recommends the board approve the 2025-2026 school calendar as recommended by the staff and presented by administration.
I make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second the motion.
And we have a motion by Dr. Joel Odom and a second by Ms. Martinez. Are there any questions or comments about the school calendar for 2025-2026? Clarifying, that was hybrid number two, option two.
Yes, sir. It's hybrid option number two. Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions, comments? Show of hands, all in favor? Seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we will consider approval of the district's Health and Wellness Committee curriculum recommendation, also by Dr. Wade.
Yes, sir. House Bill 1525 and Senate Bill 9 require the Health and Wellness Committee to review and make recommendations about curriculum related to prevention of child abuse, family violence, and reproductive health. The board adopted these resources back in March of 2023. However, the high school would like to propose a different material for the dating violence presentation. So the committee met in December and heard from a couple of presentations from the Safer Path Family Violence Shelter, and I've included in your packet two different possible presentations, whether it was a small group or a big group. Just also to remind the board that these presentations are parent opt-in only, and so parents must opt into the, the process, and any materials that we use are posted on our website for parents to be able to review. So if the board were to approve different material, we would replace what's currently there for this particular presentation. Are there any questions about that?
So what you've presented in our packet, this is information that they opt in, those parents would receive this information?
Right. It's on our web, it's our website, and we'd actually have a, an opportunity for them to come and hear from the presenter if they wanted to do that, too.
It's a lot of information.
Yes, sir.
It was.
Well, originally, they had a four or five days, and the high school said, oh, we got one presentation, one, one session. So they've tried to condense it all into one.
And a lot of those things required training for students that we had to provide, like the dating violence and...
Part of the legislation.
So who teaches?
This is an outside organization, Safer Path Family Violence, would come in and do the presentations for us. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Any questions? No questions? If not, the administration recommends the board approve the Health and Wellness Committee's curriculum recommendation as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
And we have a motion from Marshall Reed and a second from Bonna Reed. Marshall Flair, excuse me. Marshall Flair motion and Bonna Reed second. Apologize. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Seven to zero.
Thank you.
And now we will consider approval of a purchasing exceeding $50,000 by Mr. Dees.
Good evening, Mr. Shadrock, Dr. Gilstrap, board members. Florisville ISD ensures that every second through 12th grade student has access to a device for instruction with a one-to-one device student-to-student ratio. Kindergarten and first-grade students are provided devices at a two-to-one ratio, while pre-K students maintain a four-to-one ratio. As of this January, devices for pre-K to fifth graders are stored in classroom carts, and they're no longer being taken home by the students. Our device, our student device fleet includes Chromebooks for first to 12th graders and iPads for pre-k and kindergarten students, each with an expected lifespan of about eight years. As with any form of technology, these devices begin to experience issues such as failures, slower performance, and really what's important is becoming unsupported by the manufacturers. This year, as in the previous one, our order is going to cover approximately one-eighth of the Chromebook fleet, and this includes the device, a management license, and a protective case. After receiving three quotes, CDWG was determined to be the most cost-effective vendor. This purchase is going to be funded through a combination of federal and state monies and limited local funds. The quote for 500 units totals $107,100, and it's provided in your packet along with the other quotes that we received. Board action is required for this purchase since it exceeds the $50,000 limit set forth in policy CH Local. That is it. Are there any questions?
Nationally bought some, too, didn't we?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've been buying pretty much one-eighth of the fleet as, before that, Google had not set, extended their lifespan, so we were buying one-sixth of the fleet, which, we're buying quite a bit more Chromebooks. So they've, they've kind of extended the life of how long they're going to continue to provide security updates, which is really the biggest concern. So with that, we're, we're able to buy a little bit less, the Chromebooks are lasting a little bit longer. So 500, we've got about 4,000 Chromebooks total in the fleet, so 500 is roughly right around there, the one-eighth mark.
And you said this would be taken out of multiple?
Multiple funding sources, yes, sir.
I'll, I'll say this as a parent, thank you for keeping us at home for the elementary care, keeping us in school for the elementary. How's that gone? Have y'all seen a reduction in damages?
It's, we're only about two months in, but, but yes, we have seen a reduction in damages coming out of both elementary campuses. The first couple of weeks, we were kind of playing catch-up because there was devices that we were seeing that were staying that we, that we might not have seen. So we had to, we had some catching up of getting repairs that now that the Chromebooks were being left at home, or, sorry, left at school, the teachers were seeing that there was damage that, that was on the devices. So once, once we've got those repairs, yes, there's been, there's been a very visible reduction in the damage.
Hopefully that offsets some of our costs and, and for us, for the district and for the families in paying to repair them, but also hopefully it sustains the life of the fleet.
Definitely, that's, that's the goal, yes, sir.
When will these be here? When will these arrive?
They come, they arrive in the summer. So these, these devices are actually in stock with CDW already, so last year, I mean, we, we got them in April by the time that they got here, but we don't, we, they're sitting for a couple of months until summer when we do our big refresh.
So then will they issue these in the fall?
They'll come out in the fall, yes, sir.
And we're only doing 500, because I know before we were doing, like, every four years we're doing...
Yeah, we were, I think we were buying up to 700, 800 originally, the first, you know, right after COVID hit.
Are we needing that many?
We're not needing that many right now, yes, sir.
Replacing some of the old ones and moving on.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're, I mean, last year, we lost about 240 devices because of damage or not being returned to students. So that's not even taking into account the lifespan of the device, like, the support. We just, we didn't recover 240 devices, or, or there was so, the damage was so excessive that the device was not good anymore, yes, sir.
So another question is Dell. I noticed that there's a little price difference, but I believe, oh, this is the first one to quote, CDWDG, they've got cases and Dell did not have cases?
Dell, yes, that's true. Dell does not have cases. We would have to go to a different vendor. So just, just, yes, just looking at the price right away, the, the prices were pretty close, but we're, but we're getting a, we're getting, we're getting a case included in that.
$100,000 to $7,600 for the cases, so that's, that's the difference versus one of the reasons.
And we're, we're getting a deal on the cases with CDW because we're buying the devices. So normally, the cases are about $27, so we're, I think we're getting them for about 19.
Yep, 19, yes, sir. Okay.
If there are no more questions, administration recommends the board approve the student device purchase as presented.
I move to make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Craig Newt and Jason Sabota seconded. Any further discussion or comments about the... Show of hands, all in favor? Seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Okay, the board now will convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Governmental Code Section 551.074. The personnel no-voting will be taking place in the closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. Going in at 7:34. And the board will reconvene back into open session at 8:11 on March the 3rd.
All right, board members, I do have one recommendation. Administration recommends the board approve the administrative personnel contracts as presented and modified in closed session.
Mr. President, I move to accept administration's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept the recommendation from Dr. Gilstrap, Jason Sabota motion, and Joel Odom seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Seven to zero.
All right, board members, appreciated very much.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:12.